Good evening, everyone. If you could all take a seat, we have our District 53 Town Hall meeting, and I really, really appreciate you guys being here. Condition was not working appropriately, and it was a little too late to move our move our meeting. Um, I do want to thank the Commissioner for coming out. Um, I, I heard that a little rumor that after this town hall, which is his first town hall, several of the legislators asked him to do town halls as well. So, Tim, I'm sorry. Uh, but no, we appreciate you, and we appreciate the work that you're doing for the state of Louisiana. Um, once again, thank you all for coming. I also want to just mention a few of our parish officials who are here today. Senator Mike Fessy, he's back here in the back, thank you for being here. Chris Pulaski is here from the parish. Mr. Ryan Page is here at the parish. President Jason Bajaron, I lost Jason, he's back here. Thank you so much, President Bajaron, for being here. Ms. Kim Chauvin, who's our councilwoman for the Chauvin area, and Mr. Carl Harding is here as well. And if I missed anybody, Leilani, Leilani's here as well. Um, and so, thank you guys so much for being, um, part of this. It's definitely a team effort for us to put things like this on. Um, and I just, I'm going to give it to the Commissioner, because that's why you guys are here. Um, I just want to go ahead and just put a little bit of groundwork down and a little bit of rules. Um, I do ask that everybody come and be respectful with your questions. We have to remember that Tim and I have only been in office for a year, so we cannot unravel 50 years of bad policy in one year. And although we're working at what seems like lightning speed, um, a lot of the issues that we're having with insurance, it is very overwhelming, and I know-
We're dealing with it, and my family as well. Um, so just know that we're working for you, and we're going to have a path forward as well. Also, HTV, thank you so much, they're streaming live. Um, you can share this on your social media after, so that your family and friends who aren't here. Um, I'm going to go ahead and let the Commissioner speak, and after, we'll have questions from the audience. I am going to ask that we implement a two-minute timeframe, because we do have so many people here, uh, that are going to be asking questions, and just that way, we can stay on task, and we don't have to be here necessarily all night, but we don't mind staying as long as it takes. Um, so, that's it for me. Commissioner Temple, if it's up to you, uh, you want this one? All right, thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Rep. Can y'all hear me good? Thank y'all, can y'all hear me in the back? All right, good, good. I can hear it real well, standing there. Listen, I appreciate y'all coming out tonight, uh, taking time out from, from, from your families to come and talk about insurance. You know, we're all here because of the crisis we're facing. As Rep. said, you know, we've been on the job seven months, but that doesn't matter, right? Because every day, every week, every month, when you get that bill, you got to figure out how to make it work in your budget. And we're working hard for that. I want to assure you, we are working very diligently to bring relief to Louisianans. You know, we didn't get here overnight, but, but, just bear with me, let's go over a couple of facts that we all know. How did we get here? Over a 12-month and two-day period, Louisiana experienced four hurricanes. Two, the strongest estates, two of them, two of them were some of the strongest estates ever experienced. Laura, Delta, Zeta, and Ida. Eight hundred thousand claims in the state of Louisiana. Twenty-four billion dollars paid out. Twelve insurance companies went insolvent. Some of you probably had those companies, or with those companies. Over forty thousand claims went to LIGO, Louisiana Insurance Guarantee Association. Some of you may still be fighting your claim and going through that process. And then, we've had over two dozen companies just said, "We're out. We quit. We're not going to do business in Louisiana anymore." And that's what we're fighting for, is to change the Louisiana landscape, not literally, figuratively, though, from an insurance perspective, to bring companies back to Louisiana. These dozens of companies that left, it's because they can go do their business anywhere else in America. They can go write homes, and autos, and Texas, and Florida, and Mississippi, and Alabama, New York, and California. But we want them to come back here. And in order to do that, we need to change some of the laws, and we need to change some of the regulations to make Louisiana attractive again. And a lot of the people that fought us, you know, and the legislators that helped get this, you know, their argument was, "We just need to keep things the way they are. We need to keep things the status quo." But you and I cannot afford and wait for things to just magically get better. We have to force things. If we want companies to come back to Louisiana, we have to make changes. Some of them, not popular, and I'm sure we're going to be talking about those later this evening. But I can tell you, with the support of the Governor, we did get substantial, meaningful property reform done. We listened to the markets. We listened to the attorneys. We listened to the claims adjusters. We listened to all the parties that said, "These are the problems that we see, and these are the changes that need to be made on property." And we made a lot of those changes. And the industry is saying, "We are paying attention, and we will come back." They will. And like I said, it didn't, we didn't get here overnight, and we're not going to make all, we're not going to get out of this overnight, but we are going to get out of it over time, and we are on that path. And right now, at the Department of Insurance, we have several companies that are going through the application process. One or two or three companies does not solve this crisis. I understand that. But it demonstrates that we're on the right path, that we're doing what needs to be done so that next year, end of this year, next year, year after, you will have companies that want to come back and quote your home, that want to write your home, your property, your business. You know, Florida had one hurricane, Hurricane Ian. They had three special sessions, they're about to have a fourth special session, to deal with their insurance crisis. Over three years, they had these special sessions. They're now seeing the fruits of that. Eighteen months or so, that's how long it started taking for those, the changes they made to start seeing companies come back. In Florida, there's now twelve companies that have taken a rate decrease. They were just like Louisiana, they saw year after year after year, increase, 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 increase. Florida citizens, you know, we have a hundred and thirty thousand or so policies in Florida citizens, in Louisiana citizens, Florida has 1.3 million policies in their citizens. But they saw increase, increase, increase. They're now seeing twelve companies have taken a decrease. Another two dozen companies didn't take an increase, they just said, "No increase, we're just going to go flat this year." So, it does work, and Louisiana is on that path. But I know that doesn't help you here today. I understand that. But we've got to start somewhere, and we have started. On the auto side, and I know property is, is, is the major concern of people, but we all got here in a car, some way, shape, or form, so auto is important, too. We didn't make a lot of progress with auto reform. You know, the legislators, they brought legislation, they brought the things that needed to be done, and they got some bills, some tough bills, out of the House and out of the Senate, but they got, but one particular one got vetoed. You know, but we're going to, we're going to regroup, we're going to sit down, we're going to talk to all the parties that had a problem with this, and we're going to, we're going to create and work through a path forward to help bring auto reform as well. But, like I said, we're on the path, we're moving in the right direction. It doesn't help us today, I know that, but, but I understand that. I, listen, I get an insurance renewal, I get multiple ones like you do, and my rates go up like everybody else's. And no, I don't like it. And I, so I, I understand, I see it the same, I'm in the same boat. So, we are working hard, your representatives are working hard, your Governor is working hard, we are working to bring meaningful reform to you. I think they handed out, um, just, no, thank you very much. They handed out, uh, you know, a flyer that, that gives you some help on what to do, one, before a hurricane, but then also after a hurricane. Um, there's a lot of helpful numbers on here, and I can tell you, the Department, I've only been there seven months, but that every man and woman that works there is dedicated to trying to help you, their fellow citizens, their fellow family members, their friends, to bring reform and bring pricing back down in Louisiana. And I can't ever stand in front of anyone, thank you, and promise, that if we pass a bill that is going to equal to some type of percentage decrease, it just doesn't work that way. But what it does do is help create a competitive marketplace, so these companies want to come back and write your business. And that's what we're doing. We're fighting every day, we're working hard, and, you know, I'm happy to, to, to talk about some of the bills we did, but I find, in this setting, talking to you and then hearing from you, what you want me to hear, what you want to talk about, what you want to ask questions, probably gets the most benefit for everybody, so with that, I'm happy to, to take questions if you'd like. So, and I think we're going to have a few, but I'll start in the front row, if you don't mind, and then we'll-
You know, with the high rates we already have, you got to put out $8, $10, $10. How can the insurance company charge you interest and pay it at about a 15.24% interest? Is that le-
Yes. So, the question is, if you, if you, if you finance your insurance premium and pay it over, over months, over weeks, what, then, how can they charge interest? Right? Well, they have to file a, I mean, they have to file a form with the Department. As far as whether we regulate the interest or not, I don't, I don't think that that's within the purview of the Department of Insurance to regulate what that interest rate is, but it's certainly something that, that we can look at and see whether it's, it's something that falls on us, or if it's just, you know, who, who has that say-so. But, but, but I do know that, as far as when you sign that, I mean, that information should be made available to you upfront, so you know what you're paying. Right? No, I understand. Yes, ma'am. Yep, yep, thank you.
Are you doing anything to help veterans, as well as disabled people, to cap their interest rate, cap their insurance to a point that they can afford? Most of them are on fixed income, and especially our veterans, uh, who have a hard time even finding housing.
Right. As far as insurance specifically to veterans, there has been legislation passed that does give discounts for veterans. And most recently, this past session, there was additional, uh, legislation that does give discounts. But as far as capping, like, uh, at a premium level or something like that, no. And, and I don't know of another state that does. But look, I mean, let's, let's have as frank a conversation as possible. If, if you cap it, if I cap it for you, everybody else has to pay and shoulder that in some way, shape, or form. And maybe collectively, we say, "That's what we want to do." But we're not, we haven't had that conversation, and we haven't had that legislation brought. But, but again, I don't think that that's the path forward. There's certainly other programs, there's subsidies that people can go and apply for to help, and then they can use that money and, and apply it where they think they need to best. But trying to cap a premium is, again, if that's what the society decides that, that's what they want to do, they have to understand that everybody has to share that burden.
Well, thank you so much for the discounts to our veterans. I know we have some here, Mr. Harding, for instance. However, what about special needs people, uh, as far as, uh, people who are homebound, others, people who have disabilities? Are there any kind of discounts or any kind of legislation that applies to them?
Well, look, first, I, I did not, the legislation for the, for the veterans was not, I, I will not take credit for that, because that was not me, that was other folks that have done that in years past. So, thank you for the credit, but that is not mine. Um, I certainly think it's deserved. Um, as far as for, for disabled, it's the same thing. There, there are no incentive, there, there are programs that, that, that take a particular demographic and say, "You do not have to pay as much," or, "We're going to cap what you pay on that." Like I said, that's something where if you have problems meeting the premium requirements, there are other programs out there that, that people can go to to try and find money to help pay for that. Whether it's healthcare, homeowners, auto, whatever it is.
Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity to ask this question. Before the new flood map came out, I live in the north end of the parish in Shreve. And I wasn't in a flood zone, but now I am. My question is, if I'm in a flood zone now, we're moving people from the south end to the parish, to the north end of the parish, to get them out of the flood zone, so are we moving people out of a flood zone, and putting them in a flood zone? Because it doesn't make sense to me that my, that I was placed in a flood insurance for answer for the people at Isle de Jean, and they moved them to Shreve, I live in Shreve. So, this is the north end of the parish, supposed to be the, one of the highest end of the parish, so my, who, you know, how does the flood map get drawn, and how do we get put in a flood zone? You know, that's my question.
Look, and, and, and that's one we haven't touched on, right? We're talking about homeowners, and autos, and healthcare, and, and all the other, but flood is certainly on everybody's mind as well. And, and, and you all know that Louisiana is at the, the forefront of fighting with FEMA to try and get an explanation on how, how all of that works. How does risk rating 2.0 work? Where do they get the formulas, the flood mapping? You know, we need more clarity on that. Um, and I can tell you, Louisiana is in litigation with the federal government to try and get clarity on that. The answer is, I don't think that anyone has that answer except for FEMA. How do they determine? Um, we were just talking with another lady earlier that, that disputes whether or not she's in a flood zone now, and there is a process where I believe you have to go hire a surveyor and get surveyed, and then you can go and you can contest with FEMA whether or not you're in a flood zone. But, but to your point, shifting, you know, populations and all that, I, I wish, as Commissioner of Insurance, you would think insurance, flood insurance, I would have something to do with it, it is a federal program. But certainly, in conversations with the congressional delegation, I want to help them as they fight FEMA, so that we can get transparency, so that we can answer those questions that you have. I'm sorry, that's a, it's a long way to say, "I can't answer that question," but I wanted you to understand why I can't.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am.
We really appreciate it. Will the insurance companies that you all are co-ing, will the insurance companies that you all are co-ting also write policies south of I-10? We are having insurance issues here, and you may bring 10 people, but if they're only going to write in North Louisiana, it doesn't help us.
Look, and, and the question, yeah, are these companies that come back, are they going to write south of I-10? But, and I can tell you, if you sell a product, you want to sell a product, one, where the population is, that's south of I-10. Two, you want to sell your product where you can get the most for the product you're selling. And in Louisiana, when we're, the highest rates we've ever had, highest premiums we've ever seen, then they're certainly getting, you know, the most for their product. So, I cannot regulate and tell a company that they have to write in a particular, if I do, they'll say, "Thank you, but Texas doesn't make me do that, Mississippi doesn't make me do that, Alabama doesn't make me do that, no state makes me do that." So, what we can, what we can do is encourage and promote stronger building codes, and we've talked about building, you know, more resilient homes, putting fortified roofs on, making the property more attractive, so that insurance companies want to come and write. Because, listen, if you live in South Louisiana, your home's going to be, your property's going to experience hurricane winds at some point in time. And so, we're trying to promote building, stronger building codes, more resilient properties in South Louisiana, so that the companies want to come and write those stronger homes. But, but it does not work to tell a company, "You have to." Actually, it's the inverse. We want to make sure that companies don't write too much in one area, because as we saw after, especially down here in Ida, you had companies that had too much concentration, they went insolvent, they went out of business. So, it's, it's the opposite, but I understand your question.
Yeah, I do have to say, our parish has been pretty strong on requirements on new constructions, and we have followed everything they have said, so we are hoping to see a difference, because right now, the insurance is driving people out.
And the conversations I have with insurance companies, when, when I travel and, and get in front of them, I'm telling them what we've done here in Louisiana to help promote the industry, but also what the state is doing, again, to help, um, adopt more stringent building codes. Because, again, if, if you write a home, you want one that's going to be more resistant to a hurricane than one that's not, so, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, and thank you again for being with us tonight. Act 10 that was passed, thousands of these rates without Insurance Department approval. Can you give us what the thought process is behind that and how that looks?
Yes, ma'am, I will. And, and, look, insurance is complex, so I apologize if we go way down the rabbit hole on all these explanations, but I'll tell you, again, before I became Commissioner, and then after I became Commissioner, I was engaged with conversations with the insurance industry about, "What do we need to do to get you to come write businesses in Louisiana? What do we need to do to make the state more attractive?" One of the things that they identified was our current rating structure. Previously to that act, in Louisiana, it was, it was called prior approval. The insurance company had to come to the Department, and they said, "Please may we have whatever the rate was." Prior to that, 2007, there was a rating commission. It was a group of people that the insurance company had to go to and say, "Please may we have whatever." Up or down, they still had to get approval, up or down. Back in 2007, 2008, they changed it, because that process had gotten too political. They weren't looking at the math, they were looking at, "Does it make me look good, or does it make me look bad if I increase or decrease, if I allow a, a premium to go up or down?" That, that's what happened, that's what the current Commissioner said, that's why he wanted the change. He wanted the change because it'd gotten too political. Within over the last eighteen, or last 12 years, that process got too political. Insurance companies would go to the Commission, have 5% rate increase. The Commissioner would say, "No, that's too high." Three, they would negotiate. That's not, that's not how this process works. And so, what happened? Companies started going higher. If they need five, you ask for seven, because you're going to get told you can't get it, and you somewhere, and I think that it artificially pushed rates up. The other thing is that the, the current administration would only allow companies to change their rates once every 12 months. And anybody in this room will tell you, "What if the government says, 'Whatever product you sell, you can only change it once every 12 months.'" Let's say you sell gas, and you've told Department of Agriculture that you're selling it for three a gallon, and six months into it, the price of your gas goes up that you're buying, so now you need to sell it for $3.10. Too bad, you've already set $3.00 for 12 months. It doesn't work, it's not free enterprise. And Louisiana's holding companies, and again, telling me, "This is a problem, this is why we don't want to do business in the state, or it's why it's more expensive to do business in the state of Louisiana." So, I asked for the Legislature to go to what's called filing use. File and use. It works in 36 other states or something like that, and this, they come to me, they come to the Department, and they say, "This is the rate we need, up or down." They can start using it. The Department, we still have to make sure that it's actuarially justified, that it's not, um, unduly discriminatory, and that it's rate adequate. Those are the three benchmarks. So, the Department still does its job to make sure that the rates are adequate and everything else, they meet all the regulatory obligations. It just allows companies to flex, change their pricing, again, up or down, either way, not just up, up or down. It allows them to change their rates to meet current market conditions, not once every 12 months. And so, it gives companies more flexibility, which attracts more companies to Louisiana. That's the intent behind that legislation change, is to make Louisiana more attractive.
Okay, so, what you're telling me, or I just want to make sure I understand this. So, I buy a policy typically, okay, especially for real estate business? And they're paying a year in advance, so I'm paying a year in advance. Let's just say it's a thousand. So, they're allowed now to come in where it was a year, paid a thousand-
No, no. I'm following you, I'm tracking. Your premium does, if they change their rates, it does not affect you. You've, you've agreed to what the premium is going to be for a year.
Sure, okay.
It does not change, they cannot come in, in the middle of your policy and say, "We've changed." They can, anybody knew that they write-
Sure, okay.
For the next 12 months.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Your, your premium is locked into whatever you agreed to-
For that year.
Yes, ma'am. Yours is not going to change like that month to month, or whatever you're paying.
Okay, all right.
And that, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because that is, uh, thought of a lot of times by people. They think that it allows, means that your personal insurance is going to change month to month, and it doesn't.
Okay, just saying, you're right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, what assurant, like, I understand we need to get some more free enterprise in the insurance market in, in the state of Louisiana, but what assurances can we have that companies don't come in, write premiums, and then when they're hit with a disaster and multiple claims, that they do like they've done for Ida, where they just up and leave? What assurances can we get that these new companies that are coming back, that they have to state, "If we paid premiums, then if we're going to make a claim, they have a responsibility to pay the policyholder's claim," and not just, now, they may not want to write any new premium, any policies, because they can't take on any more risk, but how can the Legislature or your office ensure that we're not going to get jacked again the next time a storm comes through, because 12 companies said, "Hey, we don't want to do business here anymore"?
Right. Well, look, let's be extremely frank, it is free market. So, companies can come and they can exit whenever they want. I think, though, the, the, the more, the most important thing in your question is, what can we do to ensure that companies come in, have the financial resources to pay a claim when you need them? Because you pay good money on your premium, you expect the insurance company to pay a claim when you have it. And that is the charge of the Department of Insurance. I mean, we are, as the regulator, I say "we," it's me, I am charged to make sure that insurance companies that enter this market have the management in place, they have the financial resources to pay your claims, they have the reinsurance behind them to make sure that if they do get hit, that reinsurance is, is there in place to help pay claims? That, that, that's my responsibility is, and, and the Legislature, look, I, it's my position that the Department has always had the regulatory authority to ask whatever information it needs, but you're in, in belt and suspender mode, passed a law this past session, surprises, if you will, the Department to look deeper into an insurance company's financials, and make sure that they have the right reinsurance. Now, the other side of that coin is that you have to have people at the Department to know what this, you know, question is, when we're talking about reinsurance, because in years past, they haven't had that. So, internally, we're going, we're working through that to make sure that, that, that we have the right personnel on staff to know what you're looking at when you're talking about reinsurance. As companies come in, they also increased, and again, this is technical, so, um, you know, but before, you had to have $3 million of minimal, a minimum of $3 million of policyholder surplus to do business in the state of Louisiana. $3 million is nothing. They've increased that to $10 million now for new companies coming in. Again, at the end of the day, $10 million is really not a lot of money, when you're talking about thousands and thousands of claims. But we're looking, as companies come in, we, we sit down, there's, there's an application process, a, an interview, if you will. So, that's our job, is to gauge and make sure that these companies are coming in with the intent to come in, be successful, be here long-term, pay claims, pay them timely, pay them accurately, and, and do, you know, take care of their business. So, that, that's on me, that's on me, and that's on the Department of Insurance to regulate these companies. But at the end of the day, you also, you don't want to create an atmosphere where companies have to come in, they have to write in a particular area, and they say, "You can't leave." That's not free market. And again, if you're going to take your money and put it at risk, you're going to want to do it in a state that's going to let you operate free market. But at the end of the day, the Department needs to be in charge. There was also a bill that allows the Department of Insurance more regulatory oversight to look into the, the, some of the other structures, uh, that, how they set up the companies, MGAs and whatnot. And again, that's technical, but it, it allows us to look deeper into that, to make sure that the, that they're not just taking their money and running.
So, I have a couple of questions. So, the first question is, do you have anything, um, that we can walk away with this afternoon in the short term? Is there something that can reduce prices right now? The second question also, is there any type of federal subsidies available? The Louisiana Lottery takes care of public schools, right? Can we take care ourselves or something?
All right, let's see. Number one, what was number one again?
The first one was, like, in the short term.
Short term, okay, yes, yes. So, so, you know, the thing that people can do, the, the two things that you, that are near term, is one, and we talked about a fortified roof program. And I know that's not really near, because you got to, you got to get the roof on first, and that doesn't happen overnight, it doesn't happen over a week. So, but if you do put a fortified roof on your home, there's a grant program, and the Department is, is managing that, and we have additional funds that the Legislature allocated this year. But if you, once you get the fortified roof on, every insurance company- And what I would ask is, if you're considering to put a fortified roof on, call your insurance agent, ask them, ask the insurance company, "What type of discount would you get if you put a fortified roof on?" And look, if you don't like that number, ask them to talk, find out some other insurance companies, what are their discounts? And also, I can tell you, the department, we're working through trying to figure out a format on our system, on our website, so that we can push that information, so that you can see it more accessible. And it's, it's a lot of companies, you know, I say it's a lot of companies, but there's only a few that are actively writing. But we're trying to sift through that and see what can make public to you. But I would ask you, you know, that's one way. The other thing is that you can get a wind mitigation survey. And you have to pay, I believe it's around $300, and I know that's a lot of money, but you do a wind mitigation survey, and inspector comes to your house, and these are independent third-party, it's not the Department of Insurance, it's not the insurance industry, these are independent peoples, there may be one in this room. But they come out to your home, and they do a survey. They look at your home, they look at, they look at your roof, they look at whether you have hurricane straps, they look at, at all the things that, that your home, how it's built. And I'm telling you, a lot of people, when they get their survey done, they find things that they didn't know that they had, that gives them a discount from their insurance company. So that's one. And as soon as you get that certificate from an inspector, you take it, let your insurance company know, and they apply a discount. So those are two things that you can do that are closer to near-term. I'll jump to the lottery one, because I remember that question. Look, I mean, if, if, if the legislature has the will to allocate money to help the citizens of Louisiana, they can. Look, subsidies in the long run don't work, but I understand that there's a pain in, in the state right now. So, I, I'm not saying that that's not something that we should look at. But again, I don't have, I don't control the purse strings of, of the state budget. But if that was something that was going to be brought up, and again, I don't think that's a solution, I would certainly want to be part of that conversation. As federal, I'm not aware of any federal programs. There are, there is some talk about creating a federal savings account for people that can save money, tax-deferred, and I know a lot of people say, "Well, I don't have money to save, so how am I gonna..." That doesn't mean anything to me, and I get that, I understand that. But if it were to, to, to be created, then that would allow people to set aside money for hurricane expenses in the future that would not be taxed. And then the second question, you're going to have to remind me of that one, so. Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to note real quick, I'm back here, Tim.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Note real quick, I don't think we mentioned it, although we're not in session, the legislature is having monthly insurance meetings, and so that they can better, be better equipped for next session, so they can have some really good bills. And our Commissioner's been part of that as well, so, although we're not in session, we've been doing a lot of work, and Senator Fessie as well, and so, just know that those conversations are happening, and so a lot of the questions that are coming up tonight, we can definitely bring back to Baton Rouge. I'm trying to hit everyone, and so I'm finding going down the rows is, is the most efficient way for me to do it. I know this gentleman here in the blue had a question. HTV had us ask, "If you have a question and you're speaking in the mic, have the mic close to your mouth, and also stand up, that way they can see you on, on TV." So, this gentleman here, and then I'll come back down after I finish here, and I'll come back and make sure I get everybody I missed also. We'll give everybody the opportunity to ask their questions. Okay, so sorry.
Good afternoon. Jesse Billy out with the Punahouche Indian Tribe. Um, that Terrebonne and LaFouche have, that's, I guess, different than the other par, state, is the Morgana to the Gulf. Um, I've spoken with the Orem Corps of FEMA, would think that the levees were hurricane-proof, or that they me that the levees would have to be 50% done, the structures 50% done, the money 50% allocated. But one of the things that got me was that they count the whole levee system. So, you're looking at 40, 50 miles, maybe 70 miles, I'm not entirely sure. Um, have y'all been letting, talking about that in litigation? Because, to me, if a certain section is complete, that that neighborhood should have their rates lowered.
Yes, and, and look, I can tell you, you know, the levees, and, and I've had conversations with, with some of the folks here in the room, I've had conversations in London, I've had conversations in DC, about how do we make the insurance industry more aware of the work that's being done here? Because, look, I mean, I mean, you're a population that, you took it on to yourselves, you taxed yourselves, you built your levees, and you've proven that they've worked. You've had storms, and you haven't flooded. And so, I've had conversations with, with insurance industry, trying to get more floodriders. We have a few private floodriders in, in the country, not many, but I'm having conversations with them, and, and I know I've talked, I've spoken with, with your parish president, about bringing those folks down here to let them see what you've done, with the, with the intent, because I'm a believer, if you can see it, feel it, touch it, it's real, so that these insurance people can come down and see that you've done it, you've, you've... So, we don't need the Corps', you know, and I say "we don't need," I don't want the insurance industry to wait on the Corps', you know, certifying something. So, what my intent is to get them down here to see how they can apply a credit, if they will, one, if they will, and if so, the only way to get them to think about it is to get them down here. So I'm working on that now. It takes a long time, right, but to your point, there are areas that are protected by it, and the, and the intent is, if there's a neighborhood, if there's a section of the parish that is, I want to make sure the industry has visibility into that, so that we can try and talk about getting credit for that.
And to that note, Risk Rating 2.0 is, of course, the flood maps that we are in litigation with FEMA. I spoke to Attorney General Liz Morell, actually, last week. We're at a stalemate right now, the judge has kind of dug his feet as far as that litigation. However, she did say that she would come to Terrebonne Parish and go on HTV, or host the town hall, whatever it is that we need to have her come. Just know it's two kind of separate issues, Risk Rating 2.0, which is litigation, and then the insurance crisis. And I know it all seems like the same thing, but it just gets very kind of convoluted. Is there anybody else here? Okay, I'll just pass it down.
Thank you, Representative Domain for doing this. Thank you, Commissioner, for coming down here to Terrebonne Parish. You got a room full of people here on a Tuesday evening to talk to the Insurance Commissioner. And by the way, I'm Kenny Smith, I'm sorry, lifelong resident, Terrebonne Parish. Loud enough? I've never been told that before. Um, I'm sorry. Thank y'all for doing this, I'm About 300 people here, own all kind of commercial real estate, residential real estate, I'm daughter, have four daughters. Um, we, we've got a room full of people on a Tuesday to come talk to the Insurance Commissioner. Alright, that's what the crisis we're dealing with. We are in a fight for our survival. And I know you've heard this, and I told you this before, and I appreciate you coming, I just want to reinforce this. I do have a question, by the way. But, I also sit on a bank board, a statewide bank board, okay, where I sit on the Director's Loan Committee. We cannot lend money if you can't get insurance. We're in an economic fight for survival. So I appreciate all you've done, and try, I know we've had a lot of wins, I know there was a couple disappointments, but please don't stop. Okay? I have four daughters, all grown. I am one for four, staying in Louisiana. If you, the heck with the property, I can rebuild property, I can't get my daughters to come back. That's where we at, okay? So I appreciate all you're doing, commercial, we could argue about flood, you know, I'm, I know the levee system extremely well, we can't get it certified, and even if they do, then FEMA won't even tell you how to use it to calculate your flood insurance, okay? I have a camp in Kokadri that the flood insurance went down, and the flood insurance in my house, street went up 45%. How does that make sense? It's ridiculous, okay? But I think in Louisiana, we need tort, we need What are we going to do about tort reform? Okay, there's two sides to this. A legal rights to seek legal remedies, but at the same time, as, I tell you, a business owner with 100 vehicles on the road, oh, it's ridiculous. It's absurd. You cannot get in a wreck in Louisiana without getting in a, without getting in a lawsuit, and if you happen to have a commercial sticker on buckle up, you're getting put to it. So I'd love to hear your thoughts. I know there were some, some bills that weren't passed, what's the compromise on tort reform? Because I believe that's where it all starts. And, and we're really just putting lipstick on a pig until we address it.
Reform for a minute then? Okay, great. Listen, um, look, I just came, I was at Legislator last Friday, which is in Lake Charles, and it's an economic development group. And I stood up in front of a room of about maybe 1,100 people, and I was, this is economic development group, and I was telling them how, I mean, look, Louisiana is not the land of opportunity that it was once, was, for you and I. To your point, you know, for some reason, there's a magic line that is drawn around our state, and when you go outside that line, your auto insurance drops by half, and your homeowners drops by two-thirds. You know, and look, one of the things about being the Commissioner of Insurance is I get to talk to all the other Commissioners of Insurance in the country, and I get access National Association of Insurance Industry database. And, and it's not like I have a access the same information. But there is nothing that I have seen that justifies you and I paying the highest auto rates in the country. There is absolutely not. You know, are our roads the best in the country? No. But you know what? We do have a few more, our frequency, we do have more accidents than the, the national average, but it's not greatly over, I think it's 16% over the national average. But let me tell you what, when we get in an accident in Louisiana, we have twice as many bodily injury claims. For some reason, when we get in a wreck in Louisiana, we get injured, or at least we say we're injured. And then when we get injured, we're 2.3 times more likely to hire an attorney. So, you do the math, y'all figure it out. And, and look, I, I don't want you to give up your legal rights. I've said it since before I became Commissioner, there are times when you need to hire an attorney. There are times when an insurance company has not done what is contractually obligated to do. They either didn't pay you quickly, they didn't pay you the proper amount, they denied something that they should have paid. There are situations when you need to hire an attorney. I do not think it's every time you have a claim. But ladies and gentlemen, that's what we're paying for, that's the system that we're paying right now. And so, there is reform, we have tried to bring it about, the status quo is extremely powerful. You know, we've got to fight that. I, I, I don't, like I said, I don't know of any, I cannot stand here and tell you, "You deserve to pay the highest auto rates in the country." Our vehicles, maybe they're a little older, but, but, and, and talking about economic development, and wanting our kids to stay here, and wanting us to stay here, wanting us to be able to afford to stay here, much less our kids, you know, there's a lot of things going on at the Capitol. And our legislators, they are doing, they are moving mountains to try and change our legal, our, our, our tax structure. They're changing education, they're working on infrastructure. But I say it all the time, if you cannot afford to drive over the new bridge, or you can't afford to drive on the new highway, what does it matter? You've got to be able to afford that insurance to begin with. And so, that's, that's the, that's the angle I'm tackling it from. This is about transparency. At the end of the day, insurance is about you being made whole. If someone totals your F1, your F150, then you should get an F150. You don't get a Ferrari. You know, this is what it's about. If you get injured, and your medical bill is $1,000, that's what you're supposed to get back, $1,000, not $5,000, not $10,000, not $20,000. Listen, and, and, and again, you heard that we're going, we're doing these sessions, we're doing these hearings at the Capitol. The first one lasted nine and a half hours. The second one, there were four, and collectively, they went over nine and a half hours. But next month, we're having another, and the month after, and the month after, and we're trying to figure, we're trying to talk about what drives cost. You know, it's dollar in, dollar out. If you pay a dollar, if, if you receive a dollar in premium, and you pay out more than a dollar in losses, then you either got to charge more premium or go out of business. That's your two choices. So, so we're having conversation on what is driving those costs. Like I said, I don't want you to give up your legal rights, and I'm telling you, you're not giving up your legal rights, you're going to have the legal rights. This is really about transparency behind billing and who's getting the money. And, and I am not sitting here telling you that the attorneys are the bad actors in this by themselves. There are plenty of, there's plenty of blame to go around on who's getting money, and those committee hearings, that's what we're talking about. Because you deserve to pay an insurance premium that's appropriate. And right now, you're funding a system that's not. So, that, hopefully that answers a little bit.
Hi, thanks for coming, I do appreciate it, as far as the representative as well. Because in your opening remarks, you never said anything about the insureds, but I know with our representatives, they're our voice. So, thank you for finally coming out and doing something in this area. I have two questions. One, with new businesses, are you making sure that they're writing all of Louisiana, or just certain parts of Louisiana that are not in hurricane areas?
As, as the regulator, as I answered earlier, I cannot tell an insurance company where they have to write.
But are you encouraging those insurance companies, if you write all of Louisiana, we'll give you better rates or what have you? Are you giving them more incentives to help include us and give us some benefit?
I don't have the incentive to give. As the regulator, that is not my, I don't have that tool to say, "If you write more in South Louisiana, you get some type of tax break," or anything like that. That is not, is, is a regulator to be able to do. What, as, as I mentioned earlier, what I am doing is making sure that the industry knows that Louisiana is adopting more stringent building codes, that we have a fortified roof program, that we have the mitigation program, so people can know that what they have made available to them as far as discounts, to promote companies to come and write in Louisiana.
And inform them about the levees as well, that may also
We had that conversation just a few minutes ago.
Um, also, this gentleman talked about his daughters leaving and things like that. We have neighbors, we've had a huge outflux of people leaving this area, and it's because of the insurance rates. I had a neighbor who said his home, the insurance company was valued at $800,000. He said, "If you think my house is valued that much, give me the money and I'll be fine." He ended up selling to move to LaFouche Parish. You know, I mean, we're losing people here, and it's the people that's making this community a great community to live in. We just need somebody to back us up.
And, and look, it is, I mean, people, insurance costs are, are forcing people to move out of their homes and their communities that they've been in for decades. I mean, and that's the reform that we're fighting for, that's the reform that your legislators are fighting for, to make it so that insurance becomes affordable again, so that we can afford to, to live here. I, I could show you on my phone, every day I get an example from somebody that says, "I am moving out of this state," or, "If I move out of this state, I could save X, but I'm going to give it another year, I'm going to try and hold on because I love my state, I love my friends, I love my neighbors, I love to hunt and fish, and I want to stay here." Every day, I, I hear examples of that. But that's what encourages me to continue to fight, and, and your legislators as well. Because, like I said, we can get back to affordable. We can get back to affordable.
Thank you, Mr. Temple, for putting on his form, Representative Domain. Mr. Temple, are all insurance companies backed by like, what I mean by all, all that's listed on the Insurance Commissioner's website?
All of the admitted standard lines companies are. There are companies called surplus lines companies, which are not backed by the Louisiana Insurance Guarantee Association. So, the answer is not all.
Okay, so, how are people informed about that? Is that the agent's responsibility to make sure they tell whoever they're writing that policy that, "Hey, uh, this company could leave, and you could be caught holding the bag."
And, and I don't, I don't profess to know everything about it, but is, where's my agent in here that will tell me, as far as the, the, go ahead, Brian? It's always good to have an agent in the audience.
Easiest way to, to look to see if a carrier's admitted or not admitted, is if you, Louisiana State Louisiana state tax as a sub underneath the premium, then that non-admitted company doing business in Louisiana. If they're an admitted carrier, the state surplus lines, or the state tax is built into the rate as determined by the Department of Insurance.
And so let me add to that, and, and Ron, we can look and see if the department, we'll look and see if we can somehow differentiate between companies that are, um, you know, under protected by LIGA and those that aren't on the website. There might be a way, I don't, I'm not going to say that we can, but we'll look into it and see, maybe we can create a list that you, as a consumer, can go and look and see which ones are and are not. I, I don't know what regulatory hurdles are, but I, we'll certainly look at that. So, yes, so, so what you're Saying is it's important to know that beforehand, before you buy the policy, whether it's going to have LIGA or not.
Companies that were in business, uh, what were their responsibilities? I'm kind of piggybacking on this gentleman's question earlier. So these companies got to leave, these owners got the pocket of money, and they got to buy new ranches and new houses and things of that nature. So how can we prevent that from happening again? You know, to keep these companies from coming in and being able to rip people off, but yet still get to go build big ranches and houses and all the other good stuff?
Right. And, and I think if, when you're talking about that, there, I read, I read the same article you did in the newspaper about a particular MGA, Managing General Agency, that was Florida-based, and part of their investments was some horse ranch or something, I don't know what it was, but it was something that they spent money on. Look, if it's an, if it's not in Louisiana, I don't have the regulatory oversight to, to look into their books like that. If it's a Louisiana domiciled MGA or company, then I can, and the legislature has granted additional authority to look at. But that's part of the charge, again, as I said, as, as a Commissioner, companies that want to come in and do business, we've got to try and be the gatekeeper to make sure that companies are coming in with the intent of being here, taking your premium, and, and, and being financially responsible to pay a claim when you have one. There's certainly, look, there's certainly bad actors out there, but that's part of the role of the regulators to try, try and be the fence to keep those out.
My name is Bill Boyd. I've been in the real estate business for right on the cusp of 50 years. And I, I have seen all kinds of cycles of the insurance industry, and I would say that we're in the greatest crises in this area that we have ever been as far as insurance goes. And the problem is, we've all heard the saying, what is it going to take to cure this problem? Well, go four or five years without a storm. Well, there's people who live here who can't afford to go four or five years. So they're going to move, and we're going to lose population, and therefore, those potential insurance carriers or parties carrying insurance will have left us, and our ranks thin out. I don't think that's very positive for us. I want to thank you, Mr. Commissioner, for coming here and seeing us, feeling us, hearing us, and touching us, because that's very important. And I don't mean that in a perverted way, by the way. Anyway, but you're here, and, and I, we love our parish, we love the area that we live in, just like you love your home and other people love their home in Louisiana. So we want to stay here, we want to thrive here, and my, my greatest question to you is this, I know you've been in contact with federal legislators, and I hope that you continue with that, but I feel like that's a great place where we're going to get some relief. There are 280 million homeowners in America. If every homeowner paid $100 a year, that could spread the insurance risk as far as disaster management across the country, and we could handle our insurance payments just fine. But that's not in place yet. Is that a pipe dream, or do you see any of that as a reality?
Well, look, you know, and look, and I, I think that that sounds good. I've not put pen to paper, but listen, I'll tell you, we have a federal program right now called NFIP. It's terrible. I don't see the government getting any better at managing any type of disaster program. They haven't proved to have been able to do it yet. FEMA, for the good that it does, it's very inefficient. The federal flood program, we, we all know the pains associated with that. I don't think that the government is just going to wake up one day and say, oh, we're going to run a federal disaster program much better than we've done anything else. So I don't think that that's the answer. I don't. I, I'm encouraged to have conversations with our federal delegation members to see what, what can we do. I just don't think that, that the federal government competing with the private government works. We, again, in flood, we saw the federal government came in, they subsidized, they drove the prices down, and the private flood market said, we can't compete with the government. And then they screwed it all up. So I don't think that we would, that we should anticipate that the government would do it any differently going forward. So I don't know what the, I don't think that the federal government is the answer to that. And you're right, though, we cannot, anybody that thinks that the plan is just go a couple of years without hurricane, that's a, that's a pipe, that's hope. And I've always said, hope is not a plan, right? You need to have a path forward. What we can, and we cannot control the weather. And I say it every time I get in front of somebody, the only thing I can do is pray for a mild hurricane season, and I do that every single day. But what we can do is change the laws and the regulations and our homes, our properties, to make it more attractive for companies to want to come do business. And we are doing that, and it is going to take time. But I'm with you. Look, I've got, my daughters are mid-teens. I know in a couple of years, they're going to get to that point where they're going to say they want to stay in Louisiana or move out. I certainly want Louisiana to be a state where they feel that they can afford to live here, just like I want to feel like I can afford to live here and all of you. So from the seat that I'm in, I'm doing what I can, what I can influence, what I can regulate, what I can work with legislators to do to help make Louisiana a more attractive place to do business. And, and I say it, we do it for a whole lot of other industries in our state. We promote oil and gas, we promote the film industry, we promote manufacturing, we promote all kinds of businesses in our state. Insurance needs to be another one that we need to help promote so that they can come and do business, because it is vital to our state economy. You cannot drive a car, you cannot own a mortgage, you cannot run a business without insurance. So we got to make sure that we fix it, we get it right, so that it's affordable again.
Tim, just kind of reiterating with a gentleman that asked earlier, and Robert kind of alluded to, with the surplus line stacks, it's kind of hard to find out after the fact that you're with a surplus line carrier, and they've left, and you don't have anything. The time of an application being completed, you have to call, you have to sign what they call a non-admitted affidavit, where the agent is explaining to you, hey, these guys are not good, not that they're not good, they're not going to be here, if something happens, you're not covered under LIGA. One of the things, it's kind of something that our father taught us, and I think it just holds true, and now we're having the town meetings, we're having everything. Insured are becoming knowledgeable. And one of the things Dad said, he always taught us, the more your insureds understand, the easier your job becomes. And I told Commissioner here several months ago, I said, you know, I've not had a fun day at work since August 29th of 2021. The storm hit, we had claims issues, now we're dealing with, some claims are still out there, some people are still in litigation. Now we're dealing with the rate increases, we're dealing, it's just not, but the more that the insureds know, the better off it's going to be. And I think everybody needs to ask the question, they're coming to the town meeting, they're getting, they understand now, it hit them where it hurts. None of us expected it, Ida, none of us expected Laura, Tada, boom, 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 just unprecedented time. But the biggest thing is to understand and know, and that non-admitted affidavit is your key, that if they say, hey, you need to sign one of these selections here, watch out, because you don't know what you're going to
And look, I'll tell you, one of the things when I came into office in January was that we started looking at the website. We were revamping it, and I know we're coming next month, soon. So I'm looking at Ron for an answer, but I know coming soon, what we're trying to do is make information more readily available, easy. Because look, insurance is complex, right? It is. And, and, and I, as a consumer, I get it. All I want to do is pay my premium and get my claim paid when I have one. That's it. I don't care about everything else in between. And I know, and there's a lot of in-between when you're talking about an insurance contract. But at the Department, we're trying to make the website more user-friendly, to make it so that if you do want to go find out more about insurance, you can. And, and I know we're about to beta test something, so that it should be coming out pretty soon, so you'll see a revamped website. You can go, but listen, I can tell you, the other thing, you can call the Department and ask. You have a question, call and ask. Ron and his team are really good at answering questions, helping you when you get jammed somewhere or something you don't understand, or you thought you weren't treated fairly. The men and women at the Department do a great job of helping you, the citizens, when you call and let us know what your problem is. And look, we were, we were doing a hearing two weeks ago, and one of the gentlemen was telling me a scenario where someone had been involved in a claim, and they hadn't been able to get in contact with their insurance company after repeated attempts, and they finally had to hire an attorney. And they asked me, what do you do? They say, well, Tim, how do you regulate that? And I told them, I don't, because I didn't know that's a problem. You know, we can't, if, if we don't know that that kind of problem exists, we can't do anything about it. So when you have issues, when you have problems, call the Department. I'm telling you, they have a system set up, and it works well. They track it, they find out what the problem is, and they, and they get back to you. So when you have a problem, or just a question, call the Department. That's part of our mission, too, is to help you just understand whatever issue you have.
Hey, Mr. Tim. Um, so I'm an agent at Page Insurance, so I quote homes all day, every day, until I'm blue. Um, one question I have is, while I'm quoting all these different carriers that we have down here, why is it that if I take the same parameters for the same home with different companies, that I'm getting a different valuation? Is there anything that the Department can do to maybe limit that, or have all these insurance companies use one kind of valuation program, instead of having each company have their own separate valuation program?
Yeah. And, and I think that, that is an issue that, that we hear a lot, like, who was it? The home was $800,000, right? And you're like, there's no way you would ever get that, you know? And I understand it. Look, part of that is inflation. I think part of that is each company, because look, you know, like I said earlier about how they take rate changes, will they plug in those factors? And then they use them until they refile and change their rates? So I think that could be, I'm not trying to make an excuse, but that could be one component of it, of the rating. The second is, what, what vendor do they use to come up with valuations? Each company may have a different vendor, a different way of going about it. So there, there, I'm not aware of any uniformity in that. I don't know that we would, I don't know that that's good or not, you know?
Yeah, so there's, there's no way to regulate what, what vendor anybody can use.
Not that I'm aware of, but look, I think, I think you bring a valid point, and it's one that I'll have conversations with companies about, so I can get a better understanding myself. And then maybe next time you ask that question, we can have some more information for you.
Appreciate it.
But, but I think that, that's something at least worth looking into.
Hi, thank you very much for being here, and I appreciate all the comments, because I agree with everybody here. But I have a specific question. You mentioned fortified roofs being something that would be beneficial for us, for our insurance premiums. How is that going to be beneficial when 80% already have new roofs? Is there a retro? Is there something that we can do about that?
There's not. There's not. I mean, look, that, that's, that's the honest truth there. I mean, the brutal truth is that we had four hurricanes, we had all those hundreds of thousands of homes that got new roofs that were not fortified. Right? And, and look, and I'll tell you, that's a conversation that, that I'm, I'm having. We, we, we had a conversation at the Legislature this past session, we're going to have it again. I believe that the coastal parishes should mandate a fortified roof standard as a base. And I can tell you, in Louisiana, I don't, I, I think we are the last Gulf Coast state that does not require our parishes, they've got counties, we've got parishes, I think we are the last state that does not require our coastal parishes to have a, you know, a minimum building standard to that. We have a statewide, um, building code, which is adopted, again, this is technical, um, you know, some national building code standards, but we don't require the coastal parishes to build to a higher standard. They do it in Texas, they've started in Mississippi, Alabama does it in their two coastal counties, Florida has something similar to that. We need to go the same route. We need to continue to build better houses on a go-forward basis. You benefit from it at the end of the day, because, like I say, if your roof stays on and your contents stay dry, then you get back in your home quicker, the community recovers faster, it's better for everybody. But, but that's one, we're working with the Legislature, and not so much the Legislature, it's more the Building Code Council.
I have a question. We had FedNat Maison as our insurance company, they were financially strained, were allowed to still rewrite insurance policies, and we got hit with a storm six months later, belly up 10 months later.
Which company?
Maison FedNat. What are y'all doing to stop these people from rewriting policies when they don't have the money to back it, and then we're left holding the bag?
And look, that's, when, when, when that scenario hits me as the Commissioner of Insurance, I'll have to make that judgment call there, but, you know, I can't, I can't answer for what the previous Commissioner, what his reasoning was on that.
Farm Bureau was our insurance agent, and they allowed it, and they rewrote it. They were aware.
I, I don't want to have a public debate on that, whether who knew what, but
We need to have something done with this, because that hit a lot of people.
But now, look, and, and I think, I understand the point, is after a hurricane, you do have companies that could be potentially financially distressed, and if they start writing policies again, I, I understand the argument, but again, I think that's, again, the role of the Department is to make sure that companies that are doing business have the regulatory, not the regulatory, the financial resources to, to pay claims when a future event hits. So, and I know there were some people that were caught up in that.
Also, I have another question. We're with LIGA now, we filed our lawsuit with our insurance company 10 months, 10 months after we filed our claim, because they were not paying us. Two or three months later, they go belly up. So now we're holding the bag on our attorney's fees, we're two years later, in a few months, they're still dragging their feet. We don't have a mitig, I'm sorry, we got a mitigation date yesterday for December, but they bumped it back to November. So why are they allowed to do this? Like, this is unfair to the people to have to wait, and them get billable hours. Now that our company is bankrupt, we have to pay for our own attorney's fees, which in return costs us to have to work another five years to make up that money from our savings, but yet they get to still pocket money and drag us around the world and back again.
I would say after this, let's talk, because I think that that's something that, that we need to talk about and get some more insight in. I can't, I, I can't take an individual scenario and, and know exactly all the, you know, everything that applies to that, so I'd be happy to talk to you afterward.
And I have one more question.
That was a statement.
Mitigation companies, mitigation companies were allowed to come in our state, mitigate our homes, spray chemicals for microbial growth in our homes, unlicensed in the state of Louisiana. I have a chemical license for the state of Louisiana. You have to have that, plus you have to have your microbial growth and a mold license to be able to spray in our state. 90% of the people that came in and sprayed in our parish did not have this license, are not licensed in our state, sprayed our people's homes, the homes got put back together, and you don't have a clue what they put in your house. People are popping up with mold, sickness, et cetera. My neighbor had it, we were sick from being around in this situation. We used a local company, and we had them come spray our home. Our home's fine. After 20 months of redoing it, we finally moved back in. But a lot of our citizens have no clue that you even have to go through this, just like we have no clue of who's under LIGA. Our agents don't tell us this. There's a lot of things that our people in our parish and all around the world probably do not know, because there is no form, no do not know, because there is no form, no list, nothing to go through to guide them in the proper direction. And there's people that don't have the money to put their houses back together. We spent all our savings, we have a lot of debt, and we still have not been paid back. And we still getting dragged around the world. There's a lot of people that didn't have that. They're still living pillar-to-post. They're still living in FEMA trailers. I know a single mom that couldn't even get a FEMA trailer until nine months later, with a, with an elementary school student. There was no help, unless you knew somebody that knew somebody that could pull a string and then say, oh my God, this person needs something. And that's how people are getting helped. Like, our community does not know this. This is all stuff that, like, insurance companies need to say, hey, you have certain steps to do things, and this is what we need you to follow. I called my insurance company, and I did exactly what they told me, and then they turned around and didn't want to pay for my engineer that came out to my house, because my house was shifted. And there's a lot more, but yeah, we could definitely talk after, because I have a whole bunch. Because the way we've been treated is inhumane. It's disgusting. And our cost of living, I paid $3,500 a month more than we paid before. People can't afford that. They will move out the state. I'm begging my kids to move out the state if nothing changes.
They are moving out of the state. Thank you.
And we will make sure that the Commissioner's information is given to everybody at the end. Also, if you can, want to call our office, maybe tomorrow, next week, we'll be able to provide you that information as well, so that everybody has that information. I know there were some questions over here. You want to go this way, or I want to go this way? Okay, her first.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Freeman. Um, I've been living in Knightmare for three years since Ida. My home is still not back together. Um, my insurance company would not respond to emails, and they would not accept any phone calls. It wasn't until March 17th of 2022 that I spoke with my insurance, my desk, my desk. Um, I have begged, I have pleaded, I have sent email after email after email. I invite any government official to come to my house, because what you will see, you will not believe it. We need to govern these mitigation companies that just come in for one thing and turn around, my house isn't going to be savable. I, I don't see how. And now I'm in a flood zone, so I have to build up. It's not going to work out. My house has asbestos in it, it's got a, some kind of mystic moisture barrier. I was sick the entire time living in this house. I was scratching myself in my sleep till my arms bled. All of that was sent to the insurance company. I'm still supposed to be living in my house. I've received no ALE yet. I haven't been reimbursed for one thing that I bought to protect my house. But these mitigation companies, they figure, oh, I'm from out of state, I'm gonna go in, and I'm gonna do whatever I want to do, that I'm leaving, ain't nobody coming after me. And their invoices are fraudulent. Nobody had dumpsters in their yard after Ida. The big black trucks picked everything up. I've seen probably 10 invoices, and every one of them had two dumpsters on it. There were no dumpsters. They threw hazardous material into my front yard. If you take, and let's just say he did 5,000 homes, and every one of those invoices has two dumpsters. That's a lot of money going in the back pocket. And that wasn't the only mistake. And I have sent him emails until I finally had to get an attorney, because nothing was happening. He, no documentation, no moisture readings, no monitoring, nothing. These people need to be held accountable. I even tried calling every insurance company I could find. I called LIGA to tell them what to look for. Girl was like, thank you, but, no thank you. These people think that they have, they, they can do whatever, that they can damage your house, and it wasn't one, there were many of them, but they damaged your house, and their quote is, oh, your insurance is gonna pay for it. I got it in texts, and I've got it in emails. You know, we'll see what happens when we go to court. I mean, it's like, but these companies need to have regulations, just like a, you know, a plumber or an electrician. You know, when you're building a house, an inspector comes out and basically inspects the works that's been done. Maybe do something like that with the, you know, the mediation people. But none of them had PPE on. I don't think they knew what they were talking about. There was no supervisor. It was one person who spoke English.
And I think what you're pointing out is there is need for additional regulation on some various sectors of this industry. That's certainly not insurance, but, but look, anytime there's a catastrophic event, there are people that come out and they're opportunistic, and their job is to try and take your money and make it their money, or insurance companies' money and make it their money. So, you know, the department can play a role of helping put out information post-event, to, you know, what to be aware of, what to look for, those type of bad actors, but the mitigation companies are not regulated under the department. But I think that that's something we can try and do, to look into, to how to make you have the best claims experience that you can post-event.
Yeah, and, and Ron is here, and if there's personal questions, get Ron's information, and you guys can call the Insurance Commissioner. But the mitigation companies is something that would go through Commerce. I actually sit on the Commerce Committee. We've had conversations about regulations for the mitigation companies. I'll tell you guys right now, power of the bill, because we've had thousands of families and thousands of residents with the same issues. Stay on that, because that's out of the Commissioner's scope, but definitely something that we're going to work on next year.
Hi, Councilwoman Kim Chauvin from District 8, which is East Homer and Chauvin and Coquahdry. So while you're wanting to make it more attractive for the insurance companies, are you also trying to make it to where it's protecting the Louisiana homeowners in, in our area? That's really important to us. The other part of it is with LIGA, I, one of the things that I'm not understanding, if it's a Louisiana guarantee thing, why are we having to get lawyers to go after monies that should be paid to us? The rumor is, is that they're now only going to pay 50 cents on a dollar. I don't know if that's true, and maybe you can, you can shed some light on that. But the other question is going to be, how can LIGA's efficiency in payout claims be improved under your leadership? How can you hold them accountable for the measures that they take, and where is the transparency in dealing with LIGA?
LIGA, let's deal with that one first. So, look, I attended a LIGA board meeting a month ago. I was told it's the first time that the Commissioner of Insurance has attended a board meeting. So I'm looking, I am certainly concerned with you, because I hear it from all over the state, that LIGA is slow-paying claims and, and not being efficient. So, you know, I do not have, I do not sit on the Board of LIGA. The department has a representative on there, but I'm engaged in conversations with LIGA's management to see where they can be more efficient, where they can speed up claims. It's my understanding there are still claims open from Hurricane Laura. That's unacceptable to me. They need to get claims paid. That's their job. Now, let's look at the reality of that, too. You are with an insurance company, you filed a claim, it went insolvent, you go to LIGA, that's months and months and months before it ever gets to that point. So LIGA's already being handed a claim that, the claim is not happy, they've not had a good experience. So they're already dealing with a problem claim. It's not an excuse for them not to be efficient. But as Commissioner, I am working with them to see how they can improve their efficiency and pay claims timely. As far as the 50, 50 cents on the dollar, I have not heard that. I would say that's a rumor. I don't know, I, I don't, there's nothing in my mind that would justify even that being a, a reality. Let me, look, you can, let me know. The, what was your first question? Consumer, right. Look, it is my belief that the best consumer protection you can have is choice. If you don't like the premium you pay, you go somewhere else. If you don't like the service you get, you go somewhere else. That's choice. And I understand right now there isn't that choice. I understand, for many people, they, they don't, it's Louisiana citizens or nothing. But we've got to get back to that, where that consumer protection is your choice. And so that's what I'm working on, is bringing companies back, so that you have that consumer protection of choice. When you mandate and when you force it, you force companies just to say, I'm not going to do business there. So I am a free-market believer, because it works, and it works in all these other states. We've just got to get Louisiana, we've had a run of bad luck, we had four terrible hurricanes, we had hundreds of thousands of claims. It's going to take us a while to get out of this, but as I said at the beginning of this, we are on the right path. And I am concerned about the consumer protection. Look, if you can't afford the product, well, then you're certainly not being protected. So we got to get back to the affordability, but we have to take steps to get there. So, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Justice, for having everyone out here. Um, I've run into a number of scenarios, um, and it starts with FEMA, FEMA. But on occasion, I've found that deductibles are a problem. Um, people are underinsured, um, because of a high deductible. And then once the hurricane or the disaster hit, they're underinsured because they can't afford the insurance to start off with. So how could we help on bringing down some of these deductibles that they actually have, or give them an opportunity to actually have the repairs to their houses? So it's a fight right off the bat, because when you're underinsured, you have to go to FEMA to get the, the other part of it. FEMA's gonna recommend you to SBA, SBA is gonna deny you, then FEMA is gonna actually pick up the tab. So now going back to this gentleman that was over here on the north end of the parish, we have Mr. Smith over here, and there are others. So if you actually get a claim that's filed through FEMA, you're already a retired cafeteria worker with about $1,200 a month. Now FEMA is requiring you, in order to have that repair to that home, you have to be insured. So they were underinsured from the get-go, from the, from the start of it, so now they have to pay an insurance required by FEMA, or they won't get any repairs.
Right. And, and let me, let me just address, address the deductible portion. And, and certainly that's a, a spiral that you can get caught into with, with trying to get the FEMA assistance, and the public assistance, and whatnot. But look, when it comes to deductibles, I know over the years, we've moved from none to one, to two, to 5%. And a lot of times, you go from three to five, because you're just trying to get the premium down, but going from three to 5% is a whole lot more dollars than the premium you're going to save. But you're betting that you don't have a hurricane, or you don't have a claim on it. And it puts people in a bad position. Look, and look, when I was in London a couple of weeks ago, the reinsurers, they were telling me, they have concerns, that they, they are fearful that the deductibles have gotten too high. Because they know that it puts you in a, in a, in a bad financial position to have to come up with whatever that, that is for you. And, and look, I can tell you that, first and foremost, when you get your, when you get your policy, and whatever deductible you select, write, know what that number is. Whether it's $5,000, or $7,000, or 10, or 20, whatever the number is to you, know what that number is. And try, and try to come up with a plan to how do you pay for that, when, when you do have a claim? Because at the end of the day, you are, you're, you are saying that you're going to be responsible for that. So, but ultimately, we've got to work to bring those deductibles back down. I think part of that path is building better homes, more resilient homes. If the insurance company sees a better risk, then they're going to be willing to give more of a, a credit, if you will, on that. But, but no, I agree with you, sir. The deductibles have gotten to the point now where people are making, they're being forced to be in a bad, make a bad financial decision, by assuming a number that a lot of people don't have the, the money to, to spend. So, which is why it's important that a federal savings account, that could help offset. But again, I know you got to have the money to save to put it in one, so it's, it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg. But I'm concerned about the deductibles, the levels they've gone to, and I know the reinsurers are as well. But as far as the, the FEMA question, again, I think that's one we could talk offline and see if Ron can help. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you. You've already touched on what I originally wanted to ask, but my question is, as you just said, now we don't have, most of us don't have a choice. We have to go with Louisiana citizens, which my mother had to do on a fixed income. With the name Louisiana citizen, is that a state-owned insurance company? Because I'm just wondering why you got to pay, we have to pay so much more with less coverage. So my question is, I was wondering if it's using the name Louisiana citizen, is it statewide, we couldn't get more help?
Right. And, and look, Louisiana citizens was taken and modeled after Florida Citizens Insurance Company. They just scratched out Florida, wrote in Louisiana, and, and ran with it. Louisiana citizens is not a state-owned entity. It is not backed by the state. It is backed by you and I, at the end of the day. For those of you that remember that after Hurricane Katrina in 2005, when citizens went bankrupt, and they had to borrow a billion dollars, they borrowed it, and then we all paid for it through our homeowners' policies, through an assessment. And we're still paying that today. That bond, they bonded it out, and it expires, or it's paid off next year. So Louisiana citizens is not, the state couldn't come in and say, oh, we'll lower rates and help, and the state will pay for it. That's not how it operates. You and I end up funding it at the end of the day. But I can tell you, this, this past legislative session, one of the bills that was passed, and it was Senator Kirk Talbot authored it, everybody that's in citizen knows you have to pay 10% over the average rate. They, they put a stay on that 10% for the next three years, so starting in 2025, that 10% will not be there for '25, '26, and '27. So, but the coverages is actually, it's not less coverage. Every policy, every citizen's policy I've seen, it's as good and sometimes better than what you can get in the standard market. And, and there may be some policies.
Um, my question is, I could have misunderstood, but no one regulates what the insurance company can go up, their premiums go up?
You mean what they charge?
Have a rate increase.
They have to be actuarially justified. Meaning, they can't come in and just say, you know what, we want to charge 200% more just because. They have to say, to, whatever the percentage is, because loss development, expenses, putting money in reserve, they have to justify what that number is. And they have to actuarially. And our actuaries, we have actuaries at the Department of Insurance, and they check, they check the math, and they say, okay, this is right, or this is wrong. But at the end of the day, the consumer is the one that decides whether it's too much or not. But, but as far as actuarially, yes, they have to actuarially justify what the rate is. It's not like, like, I can go buy a bottle of water at Walmart for a dollar, and I can come in here and say, hey, it's $10. Somebody may buy it, somebody not. I don't have to justify... I don't have to justify the $10. An insurance company has to justify why they think they need to get that much.
So like, my premium with the exact same company can jump from $2,700 to $9,700?
Yes. Wow. Well, and look, though, let's talk about... But again... We can hear you. You can get a stated amount policy. I'm not saying it's not. What's the question?
How do we know as consumers that the insurance company is legit in going up the percentage that they go up?
Because the Department of Insurance checks their math. They don't get to just make the number up. They have to justify. Part of the justification may be that we have a thousand policies in Terrebonne Parish, and if we get hit by a hurricane, we have to have this much money in premium and in the bank and reinsurance purchase. They have to justify it. It is not just, they get to decide some number and charge it to you. We're the regulator, that's our job.
Definitely encourage you guys to call Ron tomorrow. He'll be waiting for everybody's phone calls, and he'll have plenty of cards. Did I get everyone's questions? Did everybody, Ms. Connie?
Parish leaders in planning and zoning, Mr. Chris Palaski over there. Has the parish adopted building codes to satisfy the insurance companies? So when they do look at Louisiana, they see that you have that in place?
I knew you'd be in the hot seat.
It's hot enough. Well, we, Terrebonne Parish has adopted the state building code. Not Dade County. The state building code, which, Mr. Tim, I know you had referred to, is almost fortified. But I'll just, let me jump in. This is something I was going to talk to you afterwards about, but I'll just, since we're talking about it, is I think that strategy of explaining to the insurers that, "Look at what the state has done as far as building codes go," is a good, excellent strategy. But in order to do that, I just want to make sure that you're covered on the backend of things. Because if, let's say we were to adopt a fortified code locally, well, that means one of two things has to happen. Either the contractors and homeowners have to pay that third-party fortified inspector to do it, which is not cheap, because I'm going through that right now for my roof. Or, okay, well, you go get your parish inspectors certified to do fortified. Okay, well, that's fine, but that means that an inspector's going to have to sit at that job site all day. Travis, do you think Robert or Mike could sit at one of your job sites all day and not go to any other builder's job site? You're going to say yes, right? But, but that's what I'm getting at, is, is in order to do that, which again, I think is a good strategy, we need to work on the backend of things to get prepared in case the insurers say, "You know what? Good idea, if you show me where you've adopted it locally, or if the state just goes full-on fortified, how do we do that?"
Well, and look, another thing that I think that the parishes, the inspectors, they need to enforce the current building codes. And I'm sure this parish does a great job at it. There are some that don't. And there are other parishes that are mandating it. If you put on, if you are building anything to pull permit, you have to get an inspector, and they have to go through the entire... And there are parishes now that have a database of every single property in their parish. They know when the roof was put on, they know who the roofer was, they know who the insurance company behind the roofer was. They know, they've got all this data. Parishes that adopt that model and go forward are going to be more attractive from an insurance perspective.
Yeah, and, and, of course, we're doing that...
And making your job more difficult, but...
And, and, you know, it's very difficult, especially on the coattails of a storm like Ida, you know, when everybody's getting their roofs fixed. It was very difficult to track all of those permits for roofing. But of course now, whenever the, they go back and get with their insurers, or this, they go to sell the house years later, now it's biting them if they didn't get that permit, right? But one of the things also, if we're talking about Louisiana Construction Code Council and fortified, is also being able to give us the ability to do some inspections virtually. Alabama does it. That's one of the reasons why Alabama was able to go fortified. Because if you have a building inspection scheduled, it's done virtually. So, you know, you've got an appointment, so then the inspector's telling you, or the chief building official's telling you, or the contractor, "Hey, move your phone to the right, move your phone to the left, take a screenshot, email me that." All that's happening. And he could do 10 inspections in an hour versus 10 inspections in a day. So those are the kinds of things that also need to happen.
But look, I can tell you, the good news, we're having, I'm having the conversations with the insurance companies on how do we get it so that you get the credit for building to those standards, for putting the fortified without... I mean, right now, because the state program, it's state money, you have to go through this very, uh, uh, how do you say it? A long process, cumbersome process to get there. But we're having the conversations with insurance companies. How do we get to like Alabama does? How do we get to Florida does? How do we get to our neighboring states? So that as, as we build, and I know not everybody's there yet, and someone said, "We've got all these new roofs on already. Now you want to go back and retrofit?" I understand there's a hurdle with that. But look, I, your elected officials, they know. We talk often. When y'all have concerns, if you bring it to them, they bring it to me. And you can bring it directly as well. But I understand insurance is the crisis that our states, it is the biggest crisis our state's facing. It is the reason that people are moving out of the state. It is the people, that people are going uninsured, that they're not insuring their homes. Which I, that is, I hate to hear that, because that is as bad as a scenario as I can imagine. So, I mean, I'm working to fix it. I am working to bring companies back, to make Louisiana more attractive state, so that you have choice. And by choice, I mean more affordable insurance. I know that your elected officials here in the room, legislators and city council members and parish, they are working with me. They're, your concern is their concern. I hear it all the time. I'm in constant contact. And look, I will, as we go through this process, as we get through this hurricane season and we move into October and beyond, I will, you know, come back, I will update you on where we are, what we're doing, the progress we're making. I mean, listen, I was, some of y'all know I was here after Ida. You know, this isn't my first trip down here, and I'll be back again. I mean, this is important, this, this community is important. Every community is important in our state, you know? But this is the one I'm in tonight. And so we hear you, I hear you, I understand the concern, the fear. I know a lot of people, they get the bill, and they figure, they can't, you have to figure out what not to pay if you're going to pay your insurance. I get that, I understand it, and we're working to make it affordable again. So, Rep, unless there's anything else, or, parish president, I'm sorry, don't want to upstaze the president. Go ahead.
I want to let everybody get their questions answered. I just want to share a little information and have a little bit of more of a conversation. First off, I want to thank Jessica and Tim for making this happen and being here. If you could, give them a round of applause, if y'all don't mind. So I want to give a few updates as it relates FEMA and what the parish is doing. Mentioned earlier, we're in a lawsuit with FEMA, and that is something that's, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 10 states, 43 parishes, and we're battling with that. That's what Jessica talked about earlier, is kind of that stalemate. We're also going through what's called a CLOMER. It's a conditional letter of map removal. We divide the parish into grids, and what's happened with FEMA is it does flood maps every 10 years. The last ones came out in 2019, those are the ones that the parish adopted. The data really is 2018 and before. So anything done since 2018 are not included in the flood maps. We're going through that process. One of the things I want to make sure everybody understands about that process, and this is something I've been sharing with Tim and all our congresspeople, is that we're looking at spending about a half million dollars of parish money, general fund, right, to get with FEMA and say, "This is data you should have included. These are levees, these are pump stations, this is everything that wasn't included in those maps." Originally, they were telling us it could take about a year. Now we're hearing that, once we submit the data, which we're in the process of getting together to make sure everything's included that we can, that it could be two years. And so the parish could spend a half million dollars, take two years to get a review, to have it not affect rates. And so that's the conversations, we're trying to make sure that everybody understands how FEMA has to change, right? And, you know, when I asked about disaster insurance across the country, right now, they're having trouble getting the FIP flood map, FUD program refunded, right? So it's like they can't get past the flood part of it to much less do anything else. And so we're definitely working, and we're having conversations, and this one, I want to kind of kick it back to you, because we've had the conversation, and I want to ask a question before that, of what is the FEMA process and everything we're fighting for and the price of flood insurance? Is that reflective in the homeowner's side of things? And is one connected to the other? But by show of hands, you may think it's stupid, but by show of hands, who is, who feels like they're currently dealing with the homeowner's insurance issue? Show of hands. All right? Who feels like they're dealing with flood insurance issue? Show of hands. All right? Who, what about both? So just to kind of get an idea of the room, and so if you could kind of elaborate a little bit more in the correlation, if any, between homeowners and flood insurance, and what does that mean to you?
Yeah, well, I mean, look, flood is excluded on your, on your properties, on your, on your homeowner's insurance. So that's not, that, there is no tight correlation to that, Jason. You know, I think what it, the conversations that I've had with companies is how, what do we do to try and bring private flood companies back to Louisiana? And there are a few, as I mentioned. There's some that, right, that's what I'm looking at. But, but look, the flood litigation that y'all are going through is, I mean, that is going to take forever and ever and ever and a day. And that's why I think it's important just for this community to continue to do your flood mitigation. Continue to build the levees out, like the gentleman was talking about. Continue to do what you can, elevate your homes where you can. Whether, if there's a federal program that will let you elevate, do that. That helps. Do that. Put the fortified roof on. Do the wind mitigation survey. Go out and try and get every discount she can. You need it. If it's there, get it. You know, but you got to, but you got to go out and look for it. It just doesn't come to you. You have to go look for it. So, but Jason, we can, you know, like I said, I certainly am trying to work with the delegation to keep pushing this flood improvement down the road.
Well, I think that's it. Do you mind getting with Ron after? Okay, all right. Yeah, just get with Ron with any questions. He'll be here with his cards. You guys can call my office. Vicki, my assistant here, she'll be able to help you to get the commissioner's information. Commissioner Temple, thank you so much for coming out today. Thank you, Terrebonne Parish, for coming and being in the heat all night with us, because, yeah. You can tell that we're so passionate about this, and you can see that we had a room full of people in this unbearable heat, and we stayed respectful, and we appreciate you coming. Thank you, HTV. This will be streaming. You can share it with your family members that weren't able to make it. I'll share it as well. Once again, know that we are working diligently for you and for the people of Louisiana, so that we can drive these, these rates down. So thank you so much, everyone, for coming out.